Oh, I just sent you that?
Yes.
Mr. Arena?
Here.
Mr. Kishani?
Here.
Mr. Coles?
Here.
Mr. Malka?
Here.
Mr. Mixel?
President.
Mr. Jardina?
I'm here.
Mr. Artusa?
Here.
Mr. Sagron?
Here.
Please note, Mr. Anderson.
We'll close our doors and see what's going on.
L L C Mobile Systems LLC, D B A Verizon Wireless. The preliminary by the site planning approval holds 125-foot telecommunication tower with a four-foot lightning rod on a 62.2-acre parcel located in the L L large, yeah, large lot, single-family residential district under Code of Towns.
Okay, yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jared Lusk with the law for Nixon Peabody, representing both Blue Sky and Verizon this evening. With me are Jackie Bardalana from Tectonic Engineering, who's the real estate consultant responsible for this, Mike Crosby, who you heard from at the last meeting from Verizon, he's the R F engineer responsible for the site. And also with me is a colleague, Steve Fantuso. I thank my partner, Ashley Champion, for being here for me last meeting. I was on vacation and that was the day that my wife invited her side of the family to our, the cots that we rented. And I can't remember how much I'd much prefer to be at this meeting than hanging out with her side of the family when her head's unveiled and I say to my family. So I appreciate her being there. I realize she made a presentation. She used to have a new face. I just wanted to follow through on that. I know at the last meeting, there were a number of discussions or a number of items raised by the public since the meeting. I know we responded to those questions at the meeting and I want to provide a little further information tonight just regarding some of the issues that were raised. One of the primary issues was the impact on property values. I think that's a debatable point. Again, many in today's, I know when I was looking for our first home with my young kids, our primary and a goal in obtaining a house was the school district, developing the school district. I provided you with a survey, independent survey, which is conducted on behalf of Verizon Wireless. You'll see that although some, you know, still believe that wireless telecommunications tower adversely impacts property values, you'll see that on page three of the, of the survey, number four, 90% of the people answered, and this was in that survey, the people that were buying a home within the next three years indicated. Number four item on the list was in an area with good cell service. First was in my price range. Second was is the size that I want. And three, in the neighborhood that I like. And four, is it an area with good cell service. To my shock, only 64% of them said that it's good, it's close to good schools. So it's the number four factor determining whether or not people want to live in a neighborhood. Particularly these times, there are more and more people that rely on the wireless telecommunications network for work, for home, for play, for monitoring their children, et cetera. And so I wanted to provide that just to show you again that the data doesn't support the fact that wireless telecommunications towers adversely impact property values, particularly as it relates to the entire town. Second, there were a couple of issues raised by the, by the county planning that we, that Stumpy provided some response to. Nothing particularly specific other than they did reference that there is in fact a creek on the property. The tower is approximately 180 feet from the creek, not disturbing anything within 100 feet of the creek. It will have no impact on the creek whatsoever and obviously during construction, we'll do what's necessary to prevent any potential adverse impacts of the project. And again, there's, they know that there are wetlands on the 60-acre site or not anywhere near any wetlands on the site. So our project will have no impact on either the creek or the wetlands. I just wanted to make sure that you were, you were aware of that. With that, I think I'll turn over to the board to see if they have any additional questions since the last meeting.
The biggest thing I think was the property values. Biggest topic and more than that is just the fact that there's a tower going in an area that's, I mean, it is a scenic area in Lake Road. I mean, Webster is one, but there's also need for contact in that area. And there are a lot of people that did contact us, you know, in favor of also, so it's always an acquisition. But it's a tower. I think I've been here since the very first tower came into this town. And there's always conditions, you know, initially, but once they're there, they become part of the area and there's none of the concerns.
Just to be clear, I've been working with Verizon Wireless for about 15 years. We don't know when we started working on this tower, but it's been five or six, seven years on this project. We've been searching for a site for that long. This is the only site available to us after all that. We're usually working on them for a year or more around that to find it. It's been such a struggle to find a location and thankfully for Verizon's network and those that rely on it, we were able to come to terms with the landlord that's hosting it. Get on that 60-acre parcel 800 feet off the road.
I think if it kind of sat close to the road, it would be more of an issue, but it's back, or back to its component fee before, is it?
I think it's eight hundred.
Is it eight hundred? Is that correct? Basically, the very back of the property would drops off in the wetland area down there. Okay, go back and go through that.
Yeah.
Board members, anybody have any questions? Okay, again, this is a public hearing and published in Webster Herald as a public notice. Now, if there is anyone wishing to speak regarding to this, and it was a public hearing, you're welcome to speak. No, I'm kidding. You saw what went on here to the, yes. Okay, back up to the board and we'll close the public hearing. Portion right back.
Excuse me, Chairman. We did get a writing comment that I moved into the record.
Sure.
Okay. Dear Mr. Kishani, I have writing to inform you that my wife and I are in favor of the proposed cell tower at 833 Lake Road. Living on Lake Road, it's sometimes hard to get quality cell service from County Line to Bay Road. In this day and age, cell service is no longer a luxury. It's necessary for work at home, entertainment, and most importantly, for emergency services. It is for these reasons to be supported for the project. Thank you. That's from Paul Gattini Owen at 1771 Lake Road.
In the, in the last meeting, in the interim there, you did have some other comments too, and phone calls and so forth. So, okay, let's see. The height of it has 125 foot. It says it has to be a maximum of 100. That's the town board then?
The town board, but then covering a part of the tuition inheritance and it also requires a special.
Special, yeah, I got that, okay. All right, anybody, any issues with it?
No issues. It's a very, very necessary thing to grant. The clients that live in that area and also work in that area. Cell service is terrible and it's really necessary.
Okay, we did get comments from the county there. What they're addressing is basically the location of the County Line. In peace, all right. Got a little secret right there for people there. Mark, you got the paperwork there?
I do. I have actually two sheets. It says motion for unlisted action, negative declaration. And the other one says notice of determination and non-significance.
This is put in afterwards?
The 17.
Wait a minute.
The county's prepared to address.
Yeah, we've been in a provide.
Okay, motion for an unlisted action, negative declaration. The town of Webster Planning Board considered request by Blue Sky Towers, 3 L L C Belt Atlantic Mobile Systems LLC, D B A Verizon Wireless, to construct a 125-foot tall telecommunications tower with a four-foot lightning rod located at 833 Lake Road on a 62.2-acre parcel. The planning board determines that the proposed action is an unlisted action based on the following. Number one, action includes a 129-foot breaking-up tower which exceeds the threshold for a type two action as defined by Section 617.5 Sub C Sub 7 for non-residential structures involving less than 4,000 square feet not involving a use variance. The planning board determined that the action is subject to a single agency review pursuant to Part 617.6 Sub B Sub 4 Seeker and that it is the most appropriate agency for making and determination of significance. The planning board therefore designates itself lead agency for the proposed action. The planning board has given consideration for the criteria for determining significance as set forward in Section 617.7 Sub C Sub 1 of Seeker and has, number one, considered the information contained in the short environment assessment form, Part 1, and number two, considered public comments directed to the planning board during the public hearing on July the 20th of 2021. Now therefore, we give resolve, the town of Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of non-significance. We give further resolve, the town of Webster Planning Board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary and file the negative declaration and discharge of town of Webster Planning Board's responsibility and lead agencies for this action. We give further resolve that the town of Webster Planning Board, based on the information and analysis above, have referenced supporting documentation and discussions of the action of the town of Webster Planning Board as documented by minutes before this meeting. And the proposed action will not result in any significant environmental impacts. We give further resolve that the town of Webster Planning Board therefore makes a determination of non-significance and we give further resolve that the town of Webster Planning Board, based on the above reasons, issued a negative declaration as evidence of its determination. The planning board has reasonably concluded following results of the proposed action when compared against the criteria in Section 617.7 Sub C. Number one, the proposed action will not have a substantial adverse change in air quality since it does not include a regulated emission source. Number two, the proposed action will not have a substantial adverse change in ground or surface water quality or quantity since the proposed action includes improvements to existing drainage, drainage soils. Number three, the action does not require water. Number four, the proposed action does not require or include sanitary facilities. Number five, the proposed action will not have a substantial adverse change and potential for erosion, flooding, leaching, or drainage problems. Construction practices will conform to accepted stormwater management and controls. Number six, the proposed action will not have a substantial adverse change in existing solid waste production since the proposed action is a radio tower that does not produce solid waste. Number seven, the proposed action will not have a substantial adverse change in existing noise over or delight since the tower does not create sound or including lighting, lighting, excuse me, or that required by the F B A. A temporary increase in noise level assists for normal construction activities anticipated during construction. Number eight, the proposed action will not have a substantial adverse change or cumulative change in traffic since a communication tower does not create traffic beyond routine maintenance trips. Number nine, the proposed action will not have a substantial adverse impact on the criteria listed under Section 617.7 Sub C Sub 1, Room Number 2 of Seeker because no habitats or threatened or major species were identified on or contingent to the proposed site. Number 10, the proposed action is not located in an area designated as a critical environmental priority by the town of Webster or New York State pursuant to subdivision 617.14 Subsection G of Seeker. The proposed action, this is number 11, proposed action is not in material conflict with the town of Webster 208, 2008 comprehensive plan. Number 12, the proposed action will not create an impairment of the criteria listed under Section 617, Subsection 6 of Seeker since the action is not located in or adjacent with the listed resources and is a character of the surrounding community. Number 13, the action will not result in a major change in no type or use of energy since the action does not require an upgrade to the electrical distribution system. Number 14, the action will not create a hazard to human health since it does not contain nor it is no played adjacent to existing sources of hazardous substances or contaminants. The project does not contemplate the use of hazardous substances and contaminants. Number 15, the action will not create substantial change in the use of land since it is located on developed community property. Number 16, the action will not attract a large number of people for more than a few days when compared to taking no action since the action is not creating areas that will attract a large number of people. And number 17, the action will not create a cumulative impact on the environment that's listed under 617.7 Subsection C, Subsection 1, Subsection X, Subsection Xi, Xi double I of Seeker.
There's a resolution?
That's the, yes.
The end?
The second.
You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Coles?
Aye.
Mr. Malka?
Aye.
Mr. Vena?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
Okay. A little way going in, is that a stoppage or anything, is it?
It's gravel.
Gravel, gravel drive going?
There's an existing drag ring that will be extended.
Yeah, it's extended, it extends down to the barn and continue back?
Correct.
Right? That's gravel.
Correct.
All right, everybody's okay with this then?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion for preliminary approval. For the 833 Lake Road telecommunications tower. And we'll make that subject to, I don't know if it has to have already a credit business, does it? No, right? Okay. All right, we'll make that subject to all the improvements to be constructed according to specifications of the town of Webster. And all site workers will be in compliance with the standards of the town of Webster and comply with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency, which is the, the, the. The approvals will be subject to the drawing number, this is actually, it's Jada number 6431, I believe, right? Your drawing, 6431, Jada number?
Yes, Jada 6431.
Okay, great. And, now, do we need anything else, anybody else? I guess that's, that's closing the door here.
One second.
Okay, motion.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Coles?
Aye.
Mr. Malka?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Okay, so we can move forward with the final adjustments. All right, for final approval, I'll make a motion and make that subject to the project review committee comments. Let's see, subject to preliminary approval conditions, subject to all applicable governmental fees, subject to departmental worst approvals. Significant construction shall occur within one year as the planning board to expire on August 13th, or August 17th, 2022. Conditions of the preliminary final approval should be depicted on your final drawings that you previously mentioned that now have. We'll make that subject to the resolution in the final two minutes. And approval is subject to the same drawing numbers. And that's a motion. You have a second, Dave?
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
Mr. Malka?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Coles?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
We have to send a letter to the town of, so I'll make a recommendation. We send a favorable recommendation for the 833 Lake Road telecommunications tower to the town board that this board has been in favor of this project. Motion.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Coles?
Aye.
Mr. Malka?
Aye.
Mr. Vena?
Aye.
Okay, well said, I guess.
Somebody will provide the, somebody will provide us with the final conditions of approval of this?
Yeah, you get it. Once they're approved, you'll get a copy.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, the project. Okay, Dave, do you want to?
We just come from here, so I'm located at 895 Bridge Road, Epicentown, Columbia. Is requesting sign approval to allow two 22-square building mounted signs to reflect a new business on a 1.4-acre parcel located in an M C, medium intensity commercial district under Code of Towns.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Tam?
Yes, I am.
All right, yes. Go ahead. We tell us what you want to do.
We would like to, we're moving to a new salon, moving the business to a new building and we'd like to add a couple of signs to the building. One on the north side and one on the west side.
Side, side is lit, is it?
The first, yes. On the north side, it's space lit and on the west side, it's not lit.
And the letters are just, don't need the letters up there or should it be on one flat?
It's going to be on one, yes, one flat.
So just the, just the numbers, the figures are left, correct?
Yes.
And the other one is on the west side? That's the other one, so?
Yes.
Any questions? Any questions?
No. My side.
Pretty simple. Taken over the building where the sandwich place was?
Yes, yes, we own, myself and my sisters own that building.
Yeah, that's right.
We locate.
Two sides, I think there was, I think in the paperwork too, there wasn't a variance granted years ago for the two sides. Two sides, basically, that goes with the building?
Right, they, I think Kevin had said that you would all have given enterprise, that, you know, okay to put the place two sides on the other side.
Okay. All right, anybody, any, well, the, the stoppage on top there, the mid-surface or the other side up there, you know?
Yes, we've had the building, excuse me, we've had the building all repainted and everything, you know?
All right, we'll do a secret right there. Don't make it as long as it lasts.
Town of Webster Planning Board considered request by applicant Harry Don.
Yes.
To allow two 22-square-foot building mounted signs for Freeze Company Air Salon located at 895 Bridge Road on a 1.4-acre parcel. Planning board classified the proposed action as a type-two action under Section 617.5 Sub C Sub 9 in state environmental review seeking regulations and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Coles?
Aye.
Mr. Malka?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
Okay, so I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion for Freeze Company Air Salon sign located at 895 Bridge Road to allow two 20-square-foot building signs. And that would be to the drawing that we have that sailed up with our J M, the company, as applied for.
Second.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Coles?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Malka?
Aye.
Mr. Kishani?
Aye.
What is it? Is it 865 Bridge Road or 895?
895.
895, correct?
895.
I guess you're also?
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
Target Drive-Up Expansion located at 895 Bridge Road, Eric Williams Slater, is requesting preliminary final site plan approval to allow the restriping of 24 parking spaces for drive-up stalls with post-panelled drive-up signs, lighting, and weight-fiending improvements at a 13.16-acre parcel located in an H C high-density commercial zoning district under Code of Towns.
Sure.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
My name is William Slater. I'm here representing Kinney Horn, which is the silencer here on behalf of Target. We are proposing an expansion to the already existing drive-up program that's on-site at 1015 Bridge Road. So we are proposing to restriping into 24 new drive-up spaces with the posted panel signs that are already on-site and we will be restriping the existing drive-up spaces as normal again. So moving, the 24 will be new, more on the eastern side of the site, part one. Additionally, there will be 12, two 12-feet-high solar-powered beacons that are basically illuminated red poles with Harvey Drive-Up verbiage that will be able to let people know who are coming into the parking lot where they are supposed to be driving. And then we also are proposing additional lighting to the existing pole at the front of the drive-up stalls.
Where, where do the poles go, I'm sorry?
The wave, wave-finding beacons go at the heads of the stalls or face the space in between.
So the one you're proposing, the one, the newer, was there another door there to come out for bringing things out or?
I believe that is part of different. This application is just for the striping, the restriping and, or not, installation of the solar-powered beacons and stuff.
Okay, so there's probably another proposal for me here? Oh, okay, I understand. Okay, good. Do we get any, on the, the drive-up signs, any, you know, any, any look at or the lighting, are we getting this, this? It's just an addition to the existing. Just going in, where is it currently, where are their parking spaces?
Yes. There will be loading spaces, so we'll have two spaces and then there'll be a six-foot-wide loading space so that the Target employees are able to pull up the packages on the side of the car for first aid purposes.
Then there are no structures going?
Nope.
Like that, so it's all?
Yeah.
Any issues?
It's away from, it's away from the main entrance.
That's away from, that's away from the main entrance, so, to, to, maybe another door, um, that probably would bring, bring it down. Right, and it's, uh, and that's, you're good. All right, um, this is a public hearing, so if there is anyone wishing to speak in the floor against this, that will close it. For the parent, or the back of the board, whatever. The other issues, nothing? Will you see her, go ahead?
Towne Webster Planning Board considered the request by applicant, William Slater, to allow the restriping of twenty-four parking spaces for drive-up stalls with post-panelled drive-up signs, lighting, and wayfinding improvements, located at ten fifty Bridge Road, on a thirteen point one-sixteen acre parcel. Plan board classified the proposed action to be a type-two action under section six seventeen point five, seven C, seven nine, and twenty-two, the State Environmental Review Secret Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Colesel.
Aye.
Mr. Malton.
Aye.
Mr. Pichon.
Okay, uh, I'm super glad, somebody wanted to make a motion to this? I'll make a motion to approve the drive-up expansion located at ten fifty Bridge Road, by applicant, William Slater, for, uh, to allow the restriping of twenty-four parking, uh, spaces for drive-up stalls with post-panelled drive-up signs, lighting, and wayfinding improvements, uh, per the drawing that we have, CO one, as applied.
Second.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Colesel.
Aye.
Mr. Malton.
Aye.
Mr. Pichon.
All right. Okay. I'll make a motion, you apply?
Yep.
To allow the restriping, uh, I'm sorry, ten fifty Bridge Road, to allow the restriping, parking spaces for drive-up stalls with post-panelled drive-up signs, lighting, wayward improvements, uh, per the drawing as you said before, CO one, as applied. You should, you should put in there, significant construction...
Oh, there is, one year.
Meaningful, no, we're going to do it within a year, just for the record, they got it.
To expire on August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel, I'm sorry, aye. Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Colesel.
Aye.
Mr. Malton.
Aye.
Mr. Pichon.
Good, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Evidence State subdivision located on three side of Salt Road, Eppington Forest Creek Equity Corp., is requesting preliminary final subdivision, uh, preliminary final subdivision and site plan approval on section one of, of seventy-nine lots, single-family residential subdivision on sixty-nine point five acres, located in a R-dish-three single-family residential district under the Code of Towne Webster.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. We were here last time, uh, for concept, we are obviously back here for preliminary final approval. I know Walt Baker had incorporated a lot of the comments that were provided by the board, and some of which were provided by the audience. Um, certainly I'll turn it over to Walt at this point to address any questions or concerns that members of the board may have. Um, but I do believe that we would have addressed everything sufficiently based upon comments we received.
Good evening, I'm Walt Baker. Walt Baker, DSB Engineers. And as Jared had mentioned, uh, we're here tonight for preliminary final, preliminary overall of seventy-nine lot subdivision on Salt Road, and, uh, final for the first section, which would be twenty-three lots. And as he stated, we were here back in June, uh, for concept approval, concept review. And, uh, we've received comments from the audience as well as the, the staff members. And then when, uh, we resubmitted the plans for this meeting, we also received, uh, comments from the staff again. I'm sure you've seen, uh, comments from the PRC. Uh, a number of them are basically statements that, uh, the lots have been reconfigured to eliminate the second pond. We had that second pond at the northern part of the site, so we're down to just, uh, one stormwater pond, and so we addressed that. As far as, uh, the comment that was received from the staff, the access easement is also eliminated as requested. Uh, the main pond was enlarged to accommodate all the stormwater, obviously, when we eliminated the second pond, we also enlarged the, the main pond along Salt Road. Uh, berm on the south side has been added to the plan, which we actually had for the concept meeting as well. So, that is on the plan. Uh, the road was moved to the north to offset, uh, from Morley, per rural county DOT. And that was also on the previous, uh, plan, but now we've incorporated these other changes as well. Sidewalks, we eliminated sidewalks and streetlights. And, uh, drainage easement, uh, for the four lots, uh, the comment that we received from the, the PRC was to, uh, reconfigure that so it wouldn't impact the backyards of the lots that are along the pond. We also added a berm along the full length of the pond, so that basically parallels Salt Road, but we had the pond along Salt Road, so the highway department could access it, and then we have, uh, the berm, so it would help buffer the backyards from the existing adjacent property owners across the street on Salt Road. So, we did that, but there was also, obviously, we have drainage in that area for the backyard, so we have some storm inlets. And we showed up a storm easement, uh, but the highway department prefers that we eliminate that easement and reconfigure that, and move the pond, move the berm back a little bit further, so the lots will end up being about two hundred and fifty feet deep, so they'll have a substantial backyard to use. Uh, move the piping then, that's why I was just mentioning the piping along that berm, so we'll take care of that, and reconfigure that, and we'll follow up with the highway department, make sure these are bringing them down. Uh, we brought the property line back to the side of the pond, so, uh, the pond area itself will just be on a separate needed parcel to the town for maintenance, so it won't actually be in somebody's backyard. And the sewer department had a couple of changes about the size of manhole barrels, so we'll take care of that. And, uh, that's about it. Uh, we also, uh, met earlier today with, uh, the adjacent property owners of the north, Dean Bay, uh, regarding a sewer connection he'd like to have to his property for future use, on his parcel, and, um... Forest Creek Equity representative is here, so we can, uh, address that as far as...
Hi, Richard Batizki. Yeah, we're, we'll, we'll put a stub, an inch, uh, main with a, I guess, a manhole at the property line, so that's between our property and the property of the north, so that you can use it in future.
Okay. Would that, would that need, and Dean's property, would that need a, a post-it or something there, or what?
Yes, basically, yeah, his property, uh, we discussed it with him earlier, and I showed him a, a plan that I put together that showed the topography of this property.
Yeah.
And his property actually is going north, it starts to drop off considerably, more like a eight percent slope heading down. So, we can put this eighty sanitary sewer, I calculated, so it'll come right to the property line, and that barrel will be about five feet from ground. And, but he's going to have to look at, uh, maybe a low-pressure forest main or something like that. We have a pump system to pump into that, grab the sewer.
Well, how tall is the berm?
Berm's five feet. Yes. And we also showed trees, we had groupings of trees delineating every property line as you go across. Uh, we have a series of tree trees at every property, each section where the berm is.
Now, where, where would the easement be, right along, close to the berm? The easement going back there? Where's the...
You mean the storm sewer easement?
Yeah, any easement at all, for anything.
Well, we're gonna redesign that, so it goes, goes, the easement would only be for access for the town to get to or catch, because it's a field inlet. So, you'd have a field inlet, so the drainage isn't blocked by the berm, obviously, the topography, it slopes towards the berm, so you have the water coming their way from the house, and then, so you'd have to provide a field inlet, and then the berm obviously goes out. Yeah. And then we have that, that discharge, well, there's discharge pipe, the storm discharge pipe that will go basically through the berm into the pond. We can, uh...
So, that gives everyone their clear backyard.
Gives everybody clear backyard.
That was, that was the goal, yeah.
Right, and their, their lots will be about two hundred and fifty feet deep.
Yeah.
And then the berm will be on their property.
Mm-hmm.
But then the usable part of the backyard, the house, if they got, say, forty foot depth of house, it still have a hundred and twenty feet of backyard. It's only, based on easements to impact any sheds or whatever.
Yeah, but I think that worked out good, there was a lot of discussion, I mean, you were saying, last meeting, it's here.
Yes, we agree with that.
Okay, um, oh, we, I've got one letter here, let me just, um... They sent this, uh, let's see, Gail Byder, she sent this in, attention, this email came from her, so, 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 let's see. The Webster Planning Board, please have this read into the record on August seventeenth, um, regarding the Everdeen subdivision. I live at three fifty-seven Gulfview Heights, my name is Gail Byder, I've been a Webster homeowner for fifty years. Seventy-nine homes in the Everdeen subdivision will result in approximately a hundred and sixty additional vehicles using Salt Road, and specifically the intersection of Salt and Woodard Roads. This intersection is already dangerous, and Salt Road, there is a gully just south of this intersection. And vehicles entering Salt Road from Woodard cannot see approaching vehicles until these vehicles emerge from the gully, and the northbound vehicles on Salt Road cannot see vehicles entering Salt from Woodard. I've lived in the Woodard Road area for thirty-five years, and although I drive a van with high seating according to external visibility, I still force myself to sit and count slowly to five before entering Salt Road. A few summers ago, the town spent an entire summer, at undoubtedly a huge expense, lowering a slightly elevated elevation to, uh, a Woodard Road between Basket and County Line Roads. And this was the benefit of six homes and twelve circle. Yet hundreds of vehicles negotiate the Salt-Woodard Road intersection daily, and with three new housing developments on Salt Road, uh, this number is increasingly dramatic. As the planning board has been considering approvals for the Everdeen West Gulf Course and Salt Road Schlegel Road housing developments, I've noted no discussion and consideration being made in regard to increasing the decreased traffic as Webster deteriorates from suburban, semi-rural to urban, suburban. Gail Byder, Gulfview Heights. All right, anyways, just, yeah. Uh, again, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here wishing to speak, any...
Yeah, so, Park Department, Sewer Department.
Yeah, I'm just looking, I have to look to the mic.
Oh, I can't.
The other one, you know?
Park Department, Sewer Department, Walt, you had mentioned, uh, that you're adding on to the sewer?
A sewer, a series of sewer stuff, I think.
Is that on the site plan that we're reviewing?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, so, well, this then, I haven't had a chance to look at it, obviously, I don't think Mary has. Uh, there's some easements that need to be resolved?
Yeah, on the property line.
Okay, and you had mentioned some for the storm as well that need to be resolved?
He has it on the plan already.
Okay, so, uh, just, so, I just want to let the board know that we have not seen this stuff, we haven't seen, uh, had a chance to review it, or how it may impact the future development of the north.
Okay, so, would, would work art, if they put it out, if they had a preliminary, uh, or a final, um, they put it out, but there's nothing until it is reviewed, no permits issued until reviewed?
Uh, you know, that's, it goes back to what, especially if they're getting preliminary or final.
Well, it's in for preliminary final, and the reason for that in this case is because they've been...
Right.
To both bars several times, you know, and they fine-tuned it, and now they've addressed everything, and we talked at the PRC, and at the last, uh, planning board meeting and so on, so we felt comfortable with them.
We did, yeah.
And we're looking complete, except this point, this...
Except for this point.
Exactly.
Correct.
So, I'd hate, I'd have to have them...
I, I...
Pull it, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I understand your point, but I think we, uh, you know, we need it as a town, we have a chance to review it.
Yeah, yeah, what we'll do is, we can prove it, what we've got, and then make it subject to review by you prior to any future, uh, before any permits are issued.
That, that sounds fair, so I think you got it.
Okay, God, but hey, like, yeah. This is the last minute thing, which is basically a favor, I'm enjoying a property, so...
It's a favor, but then they impact, uh, what else, the, of the road, so...
So, that'll work all right?
I think that'll work.
Did you know that I could show you?
Okay.
That works all right for you guys?
That'll work.
All right.
Okay.
Good, thanks, all right. Okay, um, anyone else wishing to speak in regard to this?
Yes.
Just give us your name and address, please, sure.
Mark DePaulis, two thirty-seven Salt Road, right across the street from this. Last time, last meeting, I spoke about the berm for all of us across the street from this parcel. Five-foot berm really doesn't keep us from seeing much of what goes on in all these people's backyards. I'd like to request that they consider a larger berm, much like what I said at the last meeting, in terms on, uh, Phillips Road, at the Meadows. Uh, it's a, it's a substantial berm that as you drive down the road, you see rooftops, you see the siding below the rooftop, and you don't see the decks, the swing sets, the hot tubs, the pools, the paddocks. None of us here like what happened when it got resolved from large lot to R two, but I think because the rest of us were all there ahead of time, at least we deserve the consideration of this being done in accordance so that we feel like we're not looking to these people's backyards. And I had a question, Walt, when you just spoke about this berm being in people's backyards, you were talking about the berm being their backyard, the pond, and then the berm before you get to the road.
Why don't you, let's do this, hold on, address the board with your comment, he'll take a note of that, you know, I'll have to address you, okay?
When he spoke about the berm being in people's backyard, I just assumed, that like, it would be planned, but I just assumed that the people's backyards that face the west side of the road, I just assumed that their backyards, at the end of their backyard would be the retention pond, and then beyond the pond would be the berm, and then beyond the berm would be Salt Road.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, but no, actually, the berm is on the east side of the pond, in the backyards and the homes. This way here, I think it does two things, in my opinion, I notice, one, it makes it more accessible for the highway department for maintenance in that pond, because now they have access to the whole, it's a linear, one pond. So, they have access for maintenance on that pond. Then the berm is on the east side of the thing, now the yards go right to the backyard. In my opinion, looking at some of the other projects like this, when a berm is reasonably high, this is five-foot high, it's a landscape in on top of it, people will tend to maintain it. If you make a mountain out there, they go to hell, to a age.
I can appreciate that, but now that I understand that, and, and it may have a different, a different appearance, even step far back behind the pond now, from where I stand. But now, now, now that I have a better understanding of where this pond is, it's not a big pond.
Yes.
So, what are we gonna do for all of us across the street, so this thing doesn't turn into mosquito swamp? I mean, that's, I'm, I'm, basically, I'm looking across the street at the pond. I'm also looking across the street at whatever gap is in the pond that ends up in the road or in my garden.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying.
You understand what I'm saying?
I can't answer that, I mean, I don't know if they can either, because it depends on the water flow going through there. If there's a volume of water that's running, we, we regulate it, it will stay...
If there is, that's fine, but I mean, I, I've been past enough, enough places that ones that have nothing moving on, a good case in point would be anybody that might be familiar with the Oakmont Apartment Complex on, uh, Jackson Road. Around the perimeter, there's a number of ponds.
Oh, they're stagnant all the time?
Stagnant all the time. Again, if you go down some of them, um, I can't think of... Stagnant all the time. Again, if you go down some of them, um, I can't think of, of any one, but some that had ponds in them to keep water moving, then it's a different story. And again, you know, it could be a pain in the backside, but, you know, I kind of feel like some of us got railroaded when that passed administration change, it could change. We can't do anything about that. All I can do now is speak my piece about making sure that all of us were there first. You know, make sure that this comes out the way it should, so that we're not looking at a bad bunch, a bunch of backyards in a mosquito swamp.
I, I don't know what, can you address, give them a chance to answer?
Okay.
Thank you, next, Mark, appreciate it.
Well, obviously, DEC wants the pond to have pre-standing water up to where the outfall would be. So during a storm event, it rises and recedes, and then you have a standing water pond. Who's to say, you know, you're gonna get cattails around the perimeter, which DEC also wants?
Yeah.
Because it helps filter the water out, the imperies that happen to run off and the roads and that. So they actually want to see the cattails around the perimeter, and the cattails, besides serving the function of, of, uh, being a cleaning agent for the stormwater, it also keeps the bees out. The bees will not walk into a pond if there's cattails around the perimeter. When it's mowed all the way down and it's manicured, they're invited to come in. So you're not gonna find bees landing into a stuff like that. Where this, uh, if you leave it go natural, which DEC wants, you don't have that problem. As far as anything being stagnant, again, the storm events, it rises, it falls, but you're gonna have, have a open water, you know, it's a shallow, open water pond. That's the best design they want.
Uh, is there anyone else wishing to speak regarding this? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Eddie State. I live at sixteen thirty Green Star Drive. Um, a number of things have been addressed, you know, I think people making an earnest effort. I still don't see where the traffic on Salt Road has been addressed, okay? It's getting worse. I mean, I looked at the heavy, for some reason now, ever since the bridge was repaired on Salt, we have heavy-duty trucks going up and down Salt Road that we never had before, okay? And they're obviously not making, doing business on Salt Road. I can't even figure out where they're going, other than they're going down Lake Road. So I don't know why Salt Road has, you know, become the, the route that is preferred. Recently, uh, the water, water department, Monroe County Water, has torn up the street. Their repairs are ridiculous. Uh, we have, you know, trucks, machinery in the road at all times. It is extremely hazardous for people who are bike riding or otherwise using Salt Road in order to move around. I'm a bi, I'm a cyclist, okay? I'm nervous. I grew up in New York City. I'm used to traffic, and Salt Road makes me nervous. People can't see anybody. They come up behind people, but they can't see them because people are parked, okay? In the certain, what you, I guess, what do you call it, the service lanes, the service edge, break down lane. Twenty years I complained about this, uh, someone from the police department came out, because I was vindicated, and just missed him at the last second because he pulled out around the car. And you, you know, I'm going to speed, and then I'm not speeding. So I still don't hear this addressed. The, there was a, the letter that was read in about Woodard is very, very accurate. There is a dip there. If you are going from, if you're on Woodard and you're looking to go on Salt Road, it's impossible to see what is northbound. I mean, you have to really pull out in, into, uh, that lane, the northbound lane, to see what's going on there. I think some planning has to do to handle the traffic, whether it's these people's responsibility or the town's responsibility, I don't know. But I don't think it can stay the way it is now, not with the additional traffic on that road. I think, you know, I think we're creating a dangerous situation. Okay, that's my vision.
See, this project, I mean, I, I can understand what you're saying, you know, about the Woodard Road and stuff. This is quite a ways away from the Woodard Road, really.
No, understood, it is, but you have the traffic. Salt Road is gonna have a lot more traffic.
And I understand that.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting to. With the traffic that's on there now, we're gonna add, I'm assuming that most of the homes there will have, you know, two cars, okay? And you're talking about increasing the traffic on a road that's not really designed for it. When I looked at the, uh, the last, I don't have the paper with me, and I apologize for that, but when I looked at the last report that the town has on their website for when the traffic study was done on Salt Road, it's quite a while ago, quite a while ago. I mean, it's over ten years. So, you know, again, I'm concerned, you know, this is a done deal. I understand it. I'm not gonna go back to arguing this. I think you and I, and I thank you for your letter, we went back and fought on this. But the traffic, you know, is gonna need to be addressed, either that road, God forbid, has to be widened. There may have to be a traffic signal for it. We already have people down on Schlegel who, you know, right through.
I agree with you a hundred percent with that one.
And that's gonna be, there's been a number of, I've been living where I live now since nineteen eighty-five. I've seen a number of accidents down there. And again, there's gonna be more traffic. You know, we need something done. I don't know what it is, I'm not a traffic engineer. But something needs to be looked at. This can't just go on and say, well, don't worry about it. You know, it'll somehow all fit on the roadway.
What is the speed limit at there? What do you know?
Speed limit on that is forty miles an hour.
Forty?
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. And trust me, when they pass my house...
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, you know, I understand that. But, you know, the trucks going up and down there, and these are heavy trucks. We're not talking about pickup trucks.
Yeah, see, the trouble with that, though, is you got a good point, first of all, but on the other side of the point, being a dedicated road, you can't tell if they can travel on it, and I know what you're saying, but what can you do?
Then let's, then let's enforce it, let's put, set up some enforcement.
Then it would go along.
Let's figure out what goes down on these roads, because, again, or stop people, stop truck, you know, stop people and other services from parking in the breakdown. If we're gonna, if we don't have sidewalks, okay, and we don't, okay, and I'm not expecting the town to build sidewalks. But then that breakdown line becomes something that is used by pedestrians and cyclists, okay? And you gotta do something there. I don't know what it is. I'm not, we're not gonna solve this tonight, but neither can we ignore it. It's not gonna go away. And as traffic increases, 'cause it will, we're building.
Yeah.
Now, that's all I'm asking, you know, can we do something there?
That's a common...
It is a common, I think Schlegel and Salt are very close to there, and I agree completely with you.
Yeah.
And I personally have sent letters to, uh, the county legislator to get a look at it, and I think as a board, we've sent a letter as well. So I, nothing has gotten done yet, but you're not, we're all in agreement with you.
Yeah, what is it gonna take?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I mean, I see these young kids on there, you know?
Yeah, I have young kids. I worry about, like, I won't let them cross Salt Road from Schlegel to go to the school, the planning board, which is ridiculous. Meanwhile, Schlegel and Basket is a four-way stop.
Right.
Yeah.
They don't use those roads, that area.
I mean, so, you know, if I can understand it's a county road, it may be beyond the town to address, but we can't wait until someone gets killed there to say, wow, you should have done something. You know, I, I don't think any of us want that to happen. I'm sure we don't want that to happen.
Well, it sounds, it sounds maybe a little cold to say right now, but I don't think there's anything we can do right now about that, because, you know, we're all in agreement with you a hundred percent, but you did have a good point. Maybe there's a situation where, and this has happened before, where there's been cases where people keep speeding and so on in areas, and they'll post the police cars over there once in a while and do some radar and stop like you.
That's a, yeah.
That's the only thing I can think of, sure.
It's a bit far.
We've been trying for a couple of years to get the county to put a stop sign on Schlegel Road.
Yeah.
And Salt Road. Um, I live on Salt Road, just past that, that intersection. We've been trying to keep, trying to do something about that, but that's not...
Well, that, that, again, as Josh said, they, they did respond with their letter, and they're looking in to bring the stop sign, and they're not...
So, hopefully.
It's pretty slow, but hopefully it happens.
Hopefully, they're also looking to the condition of the road now, which makes it further hazardous.
Yeah, that's because the power authorities torn us all up.
But you've seen, but you've seen, you've seen what passes as a pay down.
And then they gotta fix that street, because it's a mess.
One thing to say, they gotta...
And you talk about related to that, uh, you know, and once that's done, we won't see that kind of traffic.
Okay, we'll move on.
All right, totally understand. Thank you.
Good to talk to you. All right, anyone else?
Yes, sir.
I have one other question about that, uh, development. There'll be no streetlights there? No streetlights along that, uh, Salt Road?
Yeah, use the mic.
May I address?
Yeah, may I break for, uh, one sixteen ninety more of the way, more of Salt Road. There'll be no streetlights along there?
No. The originally proposed streetlights in the subdivision?
Yeah.
I guess, I guess I'm, I'm Salt Road. Proposed to us, so that's not gonna happen.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else wishing to comment?
What about, at the, I'm sorry, what about the intersection? Would there be one where the intersection goes in to market or not? None at all?
No, no, that would, that would be the kind of...
Okay.
Anyone else wishing, yes, sir?
It's Dean O'Kens, two ninety Salt Road, so, and we have talked, and I know we've got the board there. My question is for them, but I don't want to get y'all mad, so I'll put it to you. As far, as far as the berm, uh, the implied, be high, I agree with Mark, it would be a nice, usable, taller berm. I don't know about for Salt Road, like, you obviously have seen my property line, but I'm really looking at it. And not, not by a lot of property, totally, something's back there, and we'll walk. Two, the trees you were talking about, uh, the trees, what I keep asking for through my order is arborvitae. I would like some arborvitae. Will you say if my head road is with trees, come to my house? I would, I would love to have a cop here or there, and we'll walk out, and we'll see the line, and you can see what I'm talking about. There is no tree line. They're all just weeds that actually tip over. Every year, I probably have to push over ten, fifteen of these trees. They're just wild bushes. They keep falling down. I would like to have arborvitae planted to keep that divided. I would love to have a fence, too. And, you know, you and I can talk about that, but I got a forty-foot playground for my grandkids and, like, my parents' great-grandkids if they come over. I can see that being used as playground for the neighborhood. They're gonna look at that huge thing, and they're gonna be walking in by yard, and dogs in the by yard.
But that's, you're, you're saying that, but you don't know if that's a fact.
Oh, I know it's a fact.
Number one, number two, a backyard always backs up to another backyard, so you can impose all kinds of restrictions.
You never get a stray animal from one yard to the next. You have to be correct. Wait a minute, no, you're ridiculous. You do. The animals stray, the animals come over. I got a three-year-old granddaughter. My granddaughter gets bit by your dog?
Um, I think there's a code that says they have to...
There is a code. There, yes, there is a code, and everybody follows it, right? Just like everybody follows the speed limit on Salt Road, right? Oh, wait a minute, no, you're wrong.
I'm wrong again?
Yes, you sure are, yes. They don't, they don't follow the speed limit. Uh, what Ed was saying, like, I could probably tell you at least three times a week, there's a motorcycle goes down through there at about ninety miles an hour. They don't, they don't follow the rules. The rules are there, but they're not always followed. That's why I'm talking about the fence. I'm not saying it's on you. I'm saying it's maybe on me. I wouldn't mind a hand with that, but that's, I understand. As far as the arborvitae, instead of pine trees, pine trees, which I own millions of them on my property, they boil over. You put a pine tree out there, with the wind that we get, they're gonna be, they're gonna be laid down. Arborvitae, it's a deeper root, and it's gonna grow taller, it'll hide some of the houses, which I'm sure you're very proud of, you do. And, and it's good, you are. But I didn't buy to look at your, your houses. So I'm just, it, it basically, that's kind of what was passed in two thousand and eighteen shouldn't have passed. We can't go backward. I understand, but we're here. And I'm asking for things that, these arborvitae is not that much more, so I'll say that in my...
From our standpoint, uh, obviously, you've seen, we are certainly willing to cooperate and work with the neighbors. We've got a lot of concessions to try to make this a project that everybody can be proud of, um, including the five-foot berm. Um, in, in our experience, the five-foot berm is, is pretty significant. It certainly has impeded, if not prohibited, a lot of people from, from crossing over. Um, then keep in mind, what we put on there, generally speaking, people that buy their homes, they prove that, though. I mean, it's just natural that if they're gonna go back and if they want to put arborvitae on there, they do. Frankly, the reason why we haven't used arborvitae in the past is the deer love them. Um, and pine trees seem to work better. They grow taller, they grow thicker, um, and then you have the five-foot berm. So by the time you add the pine trees and the people move in and add their own decorations and, and stuff to it, we've had a lot of success with it. So, yeah, well, I mean, if you wanna add to that, but generally, that's the experience we have.
We just, we just, pine trees tend to spread out more, arborvitae tend to grow tall. And I don't, I don't understand what animal that would stop from going through, or kids go, walk in between. Anything would stop there, it'd be a six-foot fence.
Yeah, I, I mean, and keep in mind, there's a sizable berm, I mean, it doesn't, you know, I think it's getting down to it a little bit, but it's, it's a sizable berm.
Yes, we'll stay with it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak or comment? We did, just given two other comments. Yes, sir, guys.
Hi, my name is Dave Hill, two fifteen Salt Road. And I would just, again, like to talk about the pond. I think we're gonna be directly across from that pond. And there are a number of ponds in the area that have absolutely no water in them. And as Mark indicated, they just turn into a zesp pool, you know, mosquitoes, seaweed, you know, everything is there. And it is just very unpleasant, and we're gonna be looking directly at that. So I'm not sure, you know, what type of water level we're talking about initially. And then I know you're saying when the storm comes in, the water's gonna go up, but, you know, is there gonna be a significant water movement so that it doesn't just stagnate? You know, that, that's our concern right now, now that we're gonna be looking at this water, you know, is it gonna be clear, or is it going to be just, um...
Three, double, but a little?
Exactly, exactly. And in that track right next to us on Morley Way, they have, um, they have water there that, you know, there, there's barely any movement at all, and it is truly accessible right now. You know, we walked by there and we said, boy, I'm glad I don't live there, and now all of a sudden, you know, that's our, our front yard, so...
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Well, you wanna, you, you, I think you could retain some water in there, right?
Yes, the, like I mentioned, uh, DEC requires us to have below the outfall structure, three to four feet. And it's actually nudulation through the pond, so you have a deeper bay, and then you have what they call a micro pool. So it helps with, uh, the standing water. Obviously, depending on the storm event, how often they occur, whether the water rises, it falls, and it moves, you know, you're also gonna get groundwater movement, and we have obviously various new roads, so the storm system's all channeled through the, the storm network and into the pond. And again, you do wanna see cattails around the perimeter, that's the requirement they, they hold us to as far as designing. hold us to as far as design. So what he's gonna see, obviously, his front yard, his house is set back fifty feet, sixty feet from the road, and then you've got the rightway, which is another sixty feet wide, and then we have the pond, and the highway department wants the pond close to the road so they can access the full length of it with their maintenance vehicles. So it's their intent to have it that close to the edge of the rightway, that's gonna be backed from the road behind power poles. And, uh, you will see probably cattails around the perimeter, that, again, helps the period of pond. How much more we can do about it.
All right, is there anyone else wishing to comment?
So we received two additional comments online.
Oh, I don't know.
Uh, the first one is from Kifford Lewis of two oh three Woodsview Drive. I think the entrance to this subdivision should be moved further south. The document states that the entrance will be three hundred feet north of Morley Way. There is a significant hill just north of the proposed entrance. Southbound drivers on Salt Road, often traveling well in excess of forty miles an hour, will reach the crest of the hill and have little time to react to residents of the new subdivision turning left and heading south at presumably low speeds having just left a stop sign. Moving the entrance further south would give drivers on Salt Road more time to react, and drivers from the new subdivision a better view of oncoming traffic. I think this would be much safer.
This board and engineering agreed with that, but the county wanted it moved, am I correct?
Correct.
They moved it to the north door. So that, what are we gonna do about that?
Another comment came in from a Donald Paul. He didn't give his address, but he's addressing the board, and he's stating that he thought emergency services such as fire trucks are required, uh, they require more than one access road to a new subdivision such as this one. Um, that is only true for developments that contain a hundred houses or more, and this one only contains seventy-nine. So there is a loop that exists, and, uh, it is sufficient to have one point of entry.
All right. Okay, anyone wishing to comment? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Comments?
I agree, I believe that, uh, the county's making a mistake with that intersection. Do I have one?
Yep.
I don't know why they're making that decision with the requirement. Just seems ridiculous. That's my second one.
Okay.
Towns, a little earlier, the county expressing, they're looking at the condition of the road there.
Well, the condition, that, yeah, that's a different issue. Yeah, I think I, you have to guess it with all the work they're doing, underhailing water, basically destroying the area there. Probably have to resurface that road.
Right. Some of the water main, I've driven down there, I was down there today. Obviously, they kept a lot of the water main, you know, grass area within the rightway, and then some areas, they nearly moved it out, I don't know exactly why, it's made of plants, but they moved it, they saw cut and went out into the pavement. So obviously, you know, it's a two-lane road, and then there's a four-foot shoulder. So right now, their patchwork is basically to allow the, the trench to settle, and then I would suspect they're probably gonna mill it, rather than rigging the road, because that's what they did with the county road, they just don't, they're not gonna leave it with the patchwork that they did, because that's only temporary, it's the time to settle out.
You know, you know what might be a good idea, recommendation, too, to, when they do get to that point, that the road isn't just a, I mean, because, generally, everybody wants to go.
Yeah, everybody's...
That's a new type of road, and a two-lane road is okay, if you're riding a bike down it, you're on the edge of it, you're taking a risk, I've done it many times. And it shouldn't be completed more with a soft asphalt, whatever, you know, like Bay Road is, or I'm sorry, like Duett Road is, yeah, what I'm saying, plum road, you know, with the wide lane on there, it'd have to be that wide, with a four-foot strip of paved area.
Adds a shoulder, like all the...
Adds a shoulder, because it does get a lot of bike traffic and...
Right. I would suspect they're gonna do it the same way Mears State DFT does it when they're all done with the work. Probably gonna mill that bad spot, and then they'll probably, now they came out with the new, new pavement, it's, it's pretty nice, they've used it on the express, it's on the one oh four. And it's, it's a relatively thin pavement, but they, they pave the whole thing, it works really well, and it holds up. And then they'll go through a restructure.
So how do we get that to happen?
Once they get into the construction, I'm sure they wanted it done before work, but they, they're not gonna leave it like that.
They don't wanna do it before...
Yeah, that's why they're doing the water main now. So those are double the water main, and they're actually doing directional drilling, so that's probably for gas main repair. And, uh, once they're done with the construction work, they'll fix the road up and repaint it.
So who can, that's not your responsibility, but who can?
Uh, Red Pen Ward, dear.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, Pat goes to the meeting this evening, so...
Who goes, I'm sorry? Okay, listen.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll watch and bring the new pair and destroy the road tracks.
So what'd be a good idea, hey, I can't bring that up to them, when you were considering you want to put shoulders on the side of that? Because that does get a lot of traffic, I mentioned that.
Yeah, plus there's construction up on Lake Road, and there's new buildings going in there, so the dump trucks are going by, and they're probably gonna go to that.
Yeah.
But with some, yeah.
But that's why the water main is breaking. You can see the cracks in the street.
I guess we've, uh, pretty much covered everything. All right. Engineering-wise, Jack, oh, Mary, you know, you've been in the PRC, anything lacking that you feel needs to be addressed on this?
I don't think so. I think we'll just want to see, like, the final plans since the maintenance...
Yeah, with that sewer, um, extension, yeah. All right, um, that said, public hearing has been closed, we need to move forward. Glad you listened, right?
Whereas the Town of Webster Planning Board, considered to be pressed by Appalachian Forest Street Equity Corporation of the Southern, seventy-nine block single-family residential subdivision of sixty-nine point five acres, located in the North Three Single Family Residential District on Section two twenty-eight four to two twenty-eight eight, reported on Town of Webster. Now therefore, we have resolved that the planning board determined that the action is subject to a single agency review pursuant to Part six seventeen point six, Sub D, Sub four of SEER, and that it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. Planning Board therefore designates itself lead agency for the proposed action. Now therefore, we have resolved that the planning board has determined that the action is a type-one action based on the following criteria. One, the New York State Department of Health Title ten, Part ninety-seven, Regulations Implementing State Environmental Quality Review, Section ninety-seven point fourteen, lists of Department actions, ninety-seven point fourteen, Sub D, Sub two, Sub Roman numeral two, lists realty subdivision as type-one action. Project is a realty subdivision as defined by Public Health Law. Number two, Section six seventeen point four, Sub D, Sub eight, of SEER regulations states that any unlisted action that includes a non-agricultural abuse occurring building or parking within an agricultural district, certified pursuant to Agriculture and Market Law, Article twenty-four double A, Sections three oh three and three oh four, and exceeds twenty-five percent of any threshold established in this section. A, according to Monroe County Development Review Committee Review Comments dated seven twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, this project occurs on or within five hundred feet of land in agricultural production in Monroe County's Eastern Agricultural District. B, Part six seventeen point four, Sub D, Sub six, Roman numeral one, identifies actions that physically disturb ten acres of land are type-one actions. Number three, Section six seventeen point four, Sub D, Sub five, Roman numeral three, of SEER regulations, states that, quote, "In a city, town, or village having a population of one hundred and fifty thousand persons, two hundred units, to be connected at the commencement of habitation to existing community or public water and sewage systems, including sewage treatment works." A, according to two thousand fifteen American Community Survey Five-Year Estimates by U.S. Census Bureau, the population of the Town of Webster is forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three. Therefore, based on the criteria number two above, the threshold established by criteria number three is reduced to fifty units. Because of the proposed action, includes the construction of seventy-nine residential units, it exceeds the threshold established by criteria number three, making it a type-one action.
A second.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Mr. Rena?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Consel?
Hi.
Mr. Walton?
Hi.
Mr. Krishani? All right, um, let's see, I'll make a motion for the preliminary approval for Aberdeen State Subdivision. Um, this is, this is actually a project, normally was dated June ten, six-ten-twenty-one, and the project number is twenty-one dash one-two-zero-three-four. And let's see, make that subject to, uh, subject to PRC comments, uh, subject, subject to a letter of credit posted to the Town of Webster, uh, subject to, uh, let's see, I have nothing to do with that, let's see, it's... So we need to know their answers, we'll leave that. Address any land conveyed to the Town of Webster, I don't believe there's any, sir? The pond area?
Pond.
Okay, so we'll leave that in there. Address any land that be conveyed to the town, which we've got a direct. Um, address any recent subdivision approvals in adjacent lands that are none, we'll leave that. Um, all approvals shall be constructed according to the specifications of the Town of Webster, and all roadway construction to be in accordance with the specifications and regulations set forth by the Town of Webster. All site work is to be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster. Preserve all mature trees on the site where possible, and mark said trees, uh, by the developer's engineer prior to commencement of site work. And to comply with all requirements of any state, county, or county agency. Address drainage, lighting, signage, landscaping, buffering, the apple, there, let's see, landscape, hardscape, site accessories associated, finished grade, design, uh, must be prepared by a generic state places architect, landscape architect. And, uh, the approvals, again, are subject to, uh, project. And, uh, let's see. Regarding to the sewer, I'll put that for final, so I'll leave that as a preliminary approval. Please, sir.
Mr. Krishani?
Hi.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Consel?
Hi.
Mr. Walton?
Hi.
Mr. Rena?
Hi.
Okay, so for final approval, we make this, again, it's subject to all, uh, Project Review Committee Comments, uh, subject to parks and recreation fees that are determined by the Town Board, um, is subject to all preliminary approval conditions, subject to all governmental, applicable governmental fees determined by engineering, subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant construction shall occur on this project, one year is needed by the planning board to expire by August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. The conditions, preliminary and final approval, should be depicted on the cover page in the final design draft due to that. Uh, the engineer for the proposed, this is a key thing, now this is the thing that we were talking earlier, Mary. The engineer for the proposed project shall provide a letter of certification that all the proposed board was completed, as per Planning Board resolution, the final approval will be forced, and just to get a vacuum, let's see, a decision. We put this in all the time, but it's been going by wayside, you know, so we kind of forced it a little bit. So the next one would be a letter of credit to the town for the project, and for that, shall include the fee for the engineer's final inspection, the certification inspection action, of the site, so that it's something that you go back at the final and just kind of, you know what I'm saying, just for the record, that you go back and inspect it when it's done, this way here, it's all down, and because there's been a lot of cases where it's been slipped by, and just...
We did it for Doyle.
Yeah, it gets repeated, obviously, so, okay, so anyways, engineer, you're aware. Uh, what else? Oh, stormwater facilities are to be constructed, all site work, obviously, that goes in first. Uh, subject to resolution and final approved minutes. And again, the approvals are subject to the drawn number that used to, yeah, the number right. And, oh, I wanna add in there too, the, I just spilled out a little. Uh, the final approval should be subject to the applicant providing a sewer connection to the north bay property, an eight-inch, I think it was?
Eight inches.
An eight-inch sewer drain to the bay property, and, uh, it's actually right, because we're doing the final.
Yeah, we'll redo it, I'll, I'll get ahold of this, we'll draw it and we'll redo it, yeah.
And then you can get that done right away and get that in before you start, okay? Yeah, what do you want, I guess, just, all right, okay. All right, that's a motion for final approval.
I'll stick to it.
Mr. Krishani?
Hi.
Mr. Consel?
Hi.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Walton?
Hi.
Mr. Rena?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the project.
Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. So preserve Wood Creek Site Improvements, okay, six thirty-nine Preservation Trail Advocate Excelsior Communities Requesting Preliminary High Site Plan Approval, will allow a variety of site improvements that include the expansion of a walking trail, construction of a dog park, and landscaping enhancements on a seventeen-point-two-acre parcel located in the MHR Medium High Residential District on reported Town of Webster.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bill Price, I reside in Town of Brighton at three oh five Salt Road, and am a landscape architect and a senior associate at S M A B R. I'm here tonight on behalf of Excelsior Communities with this project, the Preserve of Wood Creek. Uh, this project was purchased by Excelsior Communities, I'm gonna say around March or April, there was the final, uh, closing on the pro, on the property. They've been going through, we're doing some improvements, both to the exterior parts of the site as well as the interior of the office and clubhouse building, as well as, uh, as well as the pool. What we're proposing here, I just, I do want to hand out just a couple of photographs of the property that you can share, just asking you to use these board numbers.
These are just some photographs of the, of the site. So this is the Preserve at Wood Creek, uh, Wood Creek actually runs through, through the site, this was a little bit to the east of gravel road, uh, it's a townhouse project, uh, constructed about fifteen, sixteen years ago back in early two thousands in two phases. And, uh, so if you're at the beginning of the project coming in off of Ridge Road, uh, there is a divided entrance road with a median in the middle, uh, a lot of the plant material in that, uh, in that median has gone somewhere, died off, and, uh, so there's just some of the existing, uh, the trees, the pear trees are still there. We'd like to refresh those islands in the median, uh, we'd like to replant those. And the sign that is on the right-hand side, or the, by the entrance, uh, to the, to the project, the shrubs have gotten a little bit overgrown, both on the front side as well as the back side of that, of the monument sign. We plan to take most of those plant materials out of there, refresh those with new plant materials. Uh, we want to add some additional street trees, uh, on the right-hand side, there's a, a gap, um, before, when you go in from Ridge Road till you get to the first, uh, first townhouse, we might plant additional trees on the east side of the main entrance, drive going in up to that first, uh, townhouse unit. And as you come in and you, you turn right, um, off of Preservation, and you, you cross over the creek, there is the clubhouse on the right-hand side. Uh, in addition to some interior improvements that are going on in the, uh, interior of the, of the building, we want to refresh the landscape that's on the outside. I think one of the pictures there will show you that, uh, over time, the, the weed fabric has kind of risen to the top, and there's no longer a lot of shrubs there, we want to replant that. And on the roadside of the clubhouse is where we would like to put the dog park. Uh, this is an open, uh, space of, of lawn, and one of the things that will be included is on the inside of the building, an older closet will be turned into a dog washing station, so that people can, uh, let their dog walk around, you know, get. Absolutely a dog washing station inside, inside the building, accessible from the, uh, from the dog park area itself. Dog park will be closed, uh, hopefully if you get the right pictures there, you can understand where we are in the project. Uh, there's a section of sidewalk that goes from the clubhouse to the main, uh, access drive that is not concrete. And I'm not sure why that happened, but originally, in the original construction, there was no concrete put in. So we want to, uh, put a concrete section of sidewalk there, we want to cross the street and catch up with the internal walking trail that wa, that takes you around the backside of the, the retention pond, uh, a lot of retention pond discussion tonight. But, uh, this was built with the original project, but where the trail, uh, currently goes is between the pond and the back of the units. So you're walking on this, uh, stone trail between the pond and people's units, and there's grills and kids' toys and, you know, people's back patio furniture. So we want to take it and restore that particular section of trail to lawn, but then move the trail to the north side of the pond and actually have a complete, you know, complete loop around the pond back to the main, uh, access drive. As part of doing that, we'll just do a little bit of clearing of the underbrush that is kind of encroached onto the existing trail. The existing trail will be topped dressed with, uh, new stone dust. Uh, when we get to the spillway from the pond, if you're looking at some of the photos, you can catch a, a photo where there's a fallen tree, and there's a bunch of, uh, uh, staghorn sumac growing out of it, that's actually the spillway. Uh, the spillway was originally designed just as an overflow mechanism in the, in the storm alarm management pond. There is also one or, I think it's more likely two overflow structures that are already there, uh, the spillway is there in case the flood event gets so high that, that, that those structures don't have capacity. So what we want to do is just clean up all that fallen timber, get the, uh, staghorn sumac out, and make a, uh, a way to walk across that spillway. There would be no change in the elevation of it, wouldn't influence or affect the, uh, anything to do with the drainage itself, but it would allow a way for people to walk across there, to, you know, take their dogs for a walk. Um, we'll have two benches, uh, placed out there, the benches will be in the sunny portion of the trail, and the opposite side of the pond from the, uh, well, one will be at the very far east end of the pond, one closer to the west end of the pond in the spillway. So, uh, that's what the improvements here are, walking trail around the pond, uh, restoration to lawn, that section of the, of the trail that is not utilized and does go between the pond and the back of people's, uh, individual units. Putting in the dog park on the north side of the clubhouse, uh, landscape improvements to the clubhouse, landscape improvements to the major drive coming in, who'd be inside the medias and trees in the lawn area on the inside of the units. That is the sum total of my presentation.
Now, if you're referring to this pond with the trees down and the water in the water, there's that, could be cleaned up and all that?
Yeah, yeah, so we would have to get that out of the way, it's ranges of two-foot in diameter to, you know, eighteen inches, that would all have to be removed.
So basically cleaning the whole site?
Yeah.
Sounds pretty good. Yeah, there's no construction, there's no, there's no structures, it's just like landscaping, I'll say. Okay. Anybody in here? Yeah, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone who should want to talk about it. Okay. All right, uh, bring it back to the board, the post-public hearing, but public notice was published in the Webster. You know, notice, I should say. Let me see.
The town of Webster planning board considered request by applicant, Excelsior Communities to allow a variety of site improvements and improvements, expansion, a walking trail, construction of a dog park, and landscaping enhancements on a seventeen-point-two-acre acre parcel located at six thirty-nine Preservation Trail. Planning board classified proposed action to be a type-two action under section six seventeen point five, sub C seven-nine of State Environmental and Secure Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Mr. Rena?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Consel?
Hi.
Mr. Walton?
Hi.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for preliminary approval.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, let's see here, for the, uh, is it, yeah, Bradford Creek, uh, site improvements located at six thirty-nine Preservation Trail, uh, for, uh, site improvements and the conclusion expansion of the walking trail, construction of a dog park and landscaping, and the head's going to ask who's that?
Project L dash four oh one?
Yeah, yeah, whatever.
L dash four oh one.
Project number, okay.
I'll second.
Mr. Consel?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Mr. Walton?
Hi.
Mr. Rena?
Hi.
Mr. Kishani?
Hi.
Final approval for the Preserve at Wood Creek located at six thirty-nine Preservation Trails, um, subject to preliminary approvals conditions. Of course, it will involve significant construction shall occur within one year as needed by the planning board to expire on August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's subject to the resolution of the final approved minutes.
Mr. Consel?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Mr. Walton?
Hi.
Mr. Rena?
Hi.
Mr. Kishani?
Hi.
Catch your call. Bradford Hills Apartments Site Improvements located at ten forty-five, uh, Buick. For a one-month wait, Excelsior Communities request preliminary final site plan approval to allow a variety of site improvements to include construction of a swimming pool, walking trail, dog park, and landscaping enhancements on a thirteen-point-six-two-acre parcel located in an HD High-Intensity Commercial District under Dakota Town Webster.
Uh, the, the, the members of the twice, uh, SWBR, um, this applicant is also Excelsior Communities, uh, they also purchased this project, uh, today I believe it's known as Ritual Apartments, you may call it in their approval from about sixteen years ago. Those were on the board. So they purchased this one around this, the same time, and, uh, we came in and, uh, took a look at, uh, what were some of the opportunities for approvals to the, uh, to the site, uh, for the, uh, for the residents. Uh, again, this one is off of Rachel Drive, uh, the, the formal address is four other way, uh, which is where the clubhouse and office are located, and it's a, just about directly behind the magazines, uh, on Holt, on Holt Road. The property, originally, we, we thought, uh, did include the construction, would approve the construction of a swimming pool behind the clubhouse, uh, no, it seems to be able to, uh, to find an original plan, including the, the pool designer, who doesn't remember it, but, so, uh, what's in the clubhouse is a lot of the administration, there is a, a workout room, there is a kitchen in there, uh, there's a multipurpose room, but there's also, uh, a utility room where the, uh, backflow prevention device is actually in that mechanical room in, in that building. So, um, the big improvements that we would be talking about would be a, a swimming pool, um, we designed it to be shaped about, uh, kind of a little wider to it, but it's going to be about eighteen feet at one end, uh, a little bit wider at the other, about thirty feet long. So it's not a huge pool, it's not that, that big, but it will be a, an exhibition for, for folks. We will also put in on the, uh, on the patio deck, we'd like to have a, uh, area for sitting, uh, an area for outdoor grilling and, uh, cooking, and then we also like to have a fire pit, um, that's outside on that, on that deck. All of the utilities necessary to serve it are literally right there in the back of the building. So we're not going to be digging up anything for services from the street, uh, we don't have to go out to the street, we're just going to the very back of the existing building. Pool equipment will be stored outside on the, I guess what we call the southeast side of the building, where there are currently H E, or air conditioning condensers, uh, on the outside of the building, and those will be screened with fencing. We're proposing fencing be solid on the right side or the east side of the building of the pool, uh, because we do have an apartment project of the resident right next to it. And then what's we get around the back of it, and on the east side, or the Rachel Drive side, we would go for an open aluminum, looks like wrought iron style, so it's visually, uh, are open. The rest of the project, uh, there's several buildings, but the retention pond, um, was put on the northeast corner of the property. Uh, there is another cross street to the north, which, and the parcel to the north is not the, not within ownership of, uh, of this project. It's been moving from, uh, Ritual to Bradford Hills. Uh, we notice a lot of people walking their dogs around the pond, um, every day, so, uh, the idea would be to formalize that with a stone dust trail that goes around the upper part, there are some fairly steep side slopes, I would say from the, from the top where you would walk around, where we'd like to put the, uh, walking trail down to the surface of the water, varies from about six to eight feet, um, and the side slopes are, are fairly steep, uh, going down to the, to the elevation of the water. So we'd like to keep that, uh, walking trail up on the top. Now, there are easements there, uh, both R G and E and non-easements, uh, access easements, it's very easy to access off of the road that is to the north there, but, um, I, I think if anything was ever to have to be dug up, the owners understand that, you know, whether it's R G and E or another utility, or the town having to do any work on the, uh, there is another old folk structure there, if they had to get in there and do any work, that restoration of this, uh, trail would not be their obligation. But, uh, as you get to the southern portion, you know, but actually about two-thirds of the pond, there's no, no easement surround. So it's not like there's other utilities in there. At the south end of the pond, there's a gazebo, we want to improve that gazebo so that there's a place for people to sit, which was the original intention was, and then just to the south of that, we have a stand of, of trees. Unfortunately, there are a fair amount of, uh, green ash in there, Darryn started to see the, uh, the impact of the Emerald Ash War, losing some of it, but there's enough maple and other, other species in there to keep that wood stand. But that's where we would like to put the dog park, uh, for this project, it's going to be at the south end of the pond and encroaching into the woodlot, it's, uh, um, so it's kind of half on a lawn area and then half, half into the woods. We've set the mentions for it, but we'd like to be able to kind of freeform it when we lay it out, and some trees will be included in the park and some, um, I believe, oh, and then you'll notice there's a, a picture of the entrance monument sign, uh, we'll change that up, the sign, the brick wall will stay, and we clean up, uh, wrought iron, yes, effect, wrought iron, uh, between the columns on the wall, that'll just be taken down, sandblasted and repainted, and then the landscaping will be updated in front of the, the side and the monument. Larger, nicer, uh, uh, merged trees will stay, they're in good condition, good health. And then a little bit further, about twenty feet behind the side, we're going to add some evergreen trees so that, uh, serves as a backdrop to the, uh, to, to the entrance monument, it screens out, uh, the, uh, the view to the front door of that, that first monument there. So the front entrance sign, the, uh, the pool complex on the back of the, uh, back of the existing clubhouse, a walking trail around the, uh, around the retention pond and, uh, and a dog park, uh, improvements we're looking to make here.
Is this the retention along Rachel Drive, is there another one on the other side of the building?
Say that again, please.
The retention, is that the one right along Rachel Drive?
Yes, it's right on Rachel, and it's, and it's north of.
You said it was on the northeast side, that's why.
When I say northeast, I apologize, it's northwest, I'm sorry.
How big would the dog, dog park be?
Um, I believe I drew it on there about sixty feet, I made twenty-five or thirty. I believe I drew it on there about 60 feet, I mean 25 or 30 feet. But I drew it kind of as a rectangle, but I want to kind of go in and out of the trees and make it a little bit interesting there.
Is that just for residents only or...?
I don't think we could really control that. I don't think we would want to. So I think, you know, anybody that lives in a project that isn't, you know, that isn't Bradford Hills would be able to... You know, there's a public sidewalk out there that's running east-west except for across the front of this where the retention pond is. So we would anticipate people walking down, walking around the pond using the dog park to continue now.
You probably don't have the answer to this, but that's a question. You're talking about adding a swimming pool. Is there going to be a light car?
I would say, I would have to say there will not be a light car. It'll be enclosed and we do know the health standards on lockable gates and hours of operation, but I don't believe there will be.
How deep is this pool?
I think the deepest in the sea is five, five and a half feet, tapering to three, three and a half.
Little's aren't providing coming out?
The big ones are, yes.
Gosh. Too bad you weren't here when I was here just before.
Place for me to go, huh? Yeah.
The only issue I have with this project is, the only issue I have with it is those chairs. Can you change the public room? Okay. Again, this is public hearing. There isn't anyone here, so I guess we'll close the public hearing. Can you talk to someone?
I'm on the team, so I love it.
All right. Back to the board. Man, you should do this. This is really serious. This is a serious debate to the property.
I'm going to enhance the lifetime of the residents, sir.
Yeah? Okay, or do a secret answer?
Tom Webster Planning Board considered requests by applicant Excelsior Communities to allow a variety of site improvements that includes construction of a swimming pool, walking trail, dog park, and landscaping enhancements on a 13.62 acre parcel. Planning Board classified proposed action to be a type 2 action under section 617.5 Subsea 79 of State Environmental Review Secret Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Submissions.
Mr. Gardina?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Kusel?
Aye.
Mr. Martha?
Aye.
Mr. Kishan?
Aye.
Before we go there, you know what we should do? We go back to the other, what we didn't preserve? There is a project number. We should probably do that because there's two separate, very similar...
Yeah.
So this is project number for, I'm sorry, for the Preserve?
Yeah.
It's project number... Go ahead. Project number 21117.00. Okay? That's for the Preserve. Just for the record, so we look at it. And then this one here, one who makes the motions, it's project number 21116.00. Okay? Okay, need a motion for preliminary approval?
I'll make a motion for preliminary approval for the Bradford Hills apartment site improvements located at 1045 4th Under Way for a variety of site improvements that includes construction of a swimming pool, walking trail, dog park, the dog park and landscaping enhancements. Let's see, your subject to PRC comments. Yeah, I can't on necessary variables for the proposal.
I think you can just close, Chris. I have those two motions.
I'll be able to send there a swimming pool and stuff. Do we need to say anything about construction or...?
Oh, you do that if I want.
Okay, all right. Ask present there, or you already got the project number.
I'll second.
Mr. Kusel?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Gardina?
Aye.
Mr. Martha?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Kishan?
Aye.
Okay. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion for Bradford Hills apartment final... Final site plan, final approval, excuse me, for Bradford Hills apartments, the complex located at 1045 4th Under Way. Subject to, let's see, any preliminary approval conditions.
Make it subject to Department of Public Works and West Coast Design Office.
Okay, so it will begin, this shall occur within one year and be by the planning board to expire on August 17th, 2022. And subject to the resolution of final approvals.
Second. Okay, motion.
Mr. Kusel?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Gardina?
Aye.
Mr. Martha?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Kishan?
Aye.
Okay, you're all set. Get on with it. We've got, I'm kind of drawing an application here for, is this at... Josh, is this at the sign? The U bar? The sign, there's a signed application. It's not on the sheet, but it's a sign. I saw it on some of those for tonight, but I need to verify. They're proposing three or four signs. So they just sent in an application and again... Okay, so is that... Okay, all right. All right, that's it. It's just going on. Okay, all right, let's see. Nothing else to improve? And I guess we're done for the night, so thanks for coming in.
Catch your hangings.
Okay, we have some raised minutes here, July 20th.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment for July 20th.
Second. Start your call favor.
Aye.